Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, February 5th, Rockport School Committee meeting. We're going to take a minute to introduce everybody, just for the record, starting with June.
June San Filippo, Business Manager.
Mark Lorenz, Committee Member.
Nicole L. Terry, Vice Chair.
Kathy Riley, Chair.
Amy Oakes, Committee Member.
Mark Branco, Superintendent.
Jess Elise, Committee Member.
Henry Parkston, Representative.
Great, thank you. The first item is the approval of the minutes from January 22nd. Has everybody had a chance to review those? Okay. Any changes or anything? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the January 22nd minute meeting? Meaning minutes.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do you have any correspondence?
We do. We have a couple pieces of correspondence tonight. One is from Ms. Bethany Brosnan, who sent us an email that should be in your drive that you have had time to review, just letting us know what her concerns related to the budget cuts and personnel are. So, just for the record, so that Ms. Brosnan knows that the school committee has reviewed that, and the leadership team and I will review that in our meetings tomorrow or Friday, and decide how best to move forward. So, thank you for your feedback. And this morning, I received a letter from Toby Arsenean, who I believe is in the house tonight. And so, he has addressed the Select Board, Department of Public Works, School Committee. So, you also have a copy of that, I believe, in your drive. And he has a couple of questions specific to special education expenses and transportation costs. So, I will make sure that we put together an answer to Mr. Arsenean as well, so that we have clarified his concerns around the budget and how we are being impacted by special education funding.
Do we have any donations this evening?
We do. So, up on the screen, a big thank you goes out. Check in the amount of $2,500 from Nacella Paving was received for DECA. Another $1,000 came into DECA from Cape Ann Savings Bank. Check in the amount of $350 went to the Music Department from Bob and Lily, and welcome. Check in the amount of $1,000 and a matching offer from Gorton's to the Music Department in memory of Russell Welch from Ruth Ellen and MacArthur. So, a big thank you there. And a check in the amount of $3,280 from the Ed Foundation, once again, to support DECA. So, I say this as often as I can publicly. I am in awe every single year and every single time I make these kind of announcements of the incredible philanthropic nature that we experience in the community of Rockport. Very, very generous in supporting the school district on top of the allocated budget. So, thank you to everyone who has supported us in the past, and thank you to these donors today.
Okay. So, next, we'll hear from our Student Advisory Committee. Representative, please.
All right. Hi. I just wanted to start off by sharing some of the future events coming up in the next week and months. Next week is the High School Spirit Week, so the students across the entire high school will be engaging in activities to bond with each other and compete across classes. And then, I think next Tuesday is when we have a guest speaker come in, Mr. Dave McGilvery. And he will talk about, I'm not sure about the topic, but I'm pretty sure it's something very important. Yeah. And, oh, what's it called? Sorry. There will be an art show, I think, on the last week of February going into March. I think that's displaying all the art from all art students across the school district. And I think the weekend, last weekend of February, is the DECA State Competition. All right. And as of Student Advisory Committee, we continued with our library project. We got some feedback from the students. Some stuff to take away was that the students wanted some update in the furniture, and some, like, rule changes about, quote-unquote, "being micromanaged." And, like, a lot of stuff about just, like, how the room is oriented, like, how the shelves are put down and stuff like that. And today, we talked about those feedbacks with Ms. Burke and Ms. Key, the current librarians, and it went very well. We were able to correspond with each other, but as of right now, that's it.
Do you have one or two takeaways from that meeting that you think, like, are actionable? That could occur?
There was a, we talked about a comment from a specific student that talked about the catalog of the current books in the library. So, we talked about possibly condoning a research, I mean, not research, sorry, like a survey, with the students to see what they would like in terms of new books, or, you know, like, new, like, magazines or stuff like that, new resources, like, not just books and magazines and stuff, but, like, also on the computers. So, we might do a survey on that one. We also talked about potential, like, readjustment of how the space is used right now, like the current office behind, like, the space behind Ms. Burke's office. We talked about possibly, like, you know, changing stuff around so that the spaces...
My apologies, I skipped over number five, the subject of personnel.
So, we do have some personnel updates. We'd like to thank Megan Shelton for her service in the district. She has resigned from her position as an elementary school paraprofessional, and I believe has taken a position as a teacher. So, I think we talked about this many times during budget meetings in the past month or so, that we are really fortunate in the Rockport Public Schools to have a cadre of paraprofessionals who not only have college degrees, but who also, in many cases, are licensed professionals educators. And so, that is not always the case in some school districts, and so, we really do leverage their skill sets and their abilities. And in many cases, Rockport becomes a really good, we benefit from having them, but it also becomes, like, a nice opportunity for them to kind of hone their skill sets, build their resume. And then, if we can't, you know, hold on to them as teachers, they get to move on and kind of up their professional level in another district. So, thank you to Megan for her time here. We welcome Kiva Trumbor, who was recently hired as an elementary school paraprofessional. And we also welcome Julianne Francis, who was just hired as an elementary school special education teacher, and she will be helping Anne Marie, Principal Waterman, and the rest of the Special Ed Department put together the special ed programming that we're building at the elementary school that you have seen in the budget book and that we'll talk a little more extensively about tonight. So, welcome to Kiva and Julianne, Julianne, sorry. And congratulations to Megan. We will move on to the public budget hearing. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put a PDF of the full budget book. The school committee has had the proposed budget book for a while now. We will project it, talk through it page by page, we'll kind of go quickly through some of it, and slow down on some of the more important details. And then, once the budget book is finalized and approved, it will be available to the public on the website as early as possible. Copies will be, once again, available to the public in the library, and other copies will be dropped off at Town Hall. So, tonight, we'll go through the entire proposed budget in its entirety. We've moved public comments to after the presentation of the budget. We'll have our public comment section, so people can respond to the budget presentation however they like. And then, we'll come back to have the school committee have a final set of questions and comments after the public comment, and then, take a vote at the end. So, that'll be sort of the order of events that we follow.
I was just going to comment for people that may not have been here, who are here tonight, who may not have previously been here, that this is maybe the third or fourth iteration. So, this is fourth iteration. So, we've kind of been going through this and asking questions along the way. So, if there's things, you're kind of like, why aren't they asking more questions? Why aren't they, this is sort of the end of our process that we've been going through. Just wanted to make sure everyone knows that.
So, I will blow this up as big as I can make it, so everybody in the back row. So, if you have old eyes like I do, and you're sitting in the back and you don't have a good view, just give me a wave, and I'll try to make it even bigger for you. Just a quick acknowledgement that we have some fantastic student artwork in this book. Again, Henry just talked about the art exhibit that's going to happen downtown. It's amazing, 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 the artwork that we see coming out of these kids every single year. So, there's a smattering of examples throughout this budget book, kids all the way down to the elementary school, all the way up to some of our seniors who are in AP Art and potentially going off to college for art. So, very talented group of young artists displayed on this book tonight. Just a quick highlight that when you finally get to see this, you'll see an overview message from myself and Chairwoman Kathy Riley, really to kind of highlight the fact that our budget, the majority of our budget increases are really the result of Operational Services Division from the state upping tuition around non-consortium, out-of-district special ed programs, and 10% in our current collaborative tuition rates. So, that's really the big drivers for the increases. We'll talk about reductions a lot tonight, and how the district has tried to mitigate the increase of the budget on the taxpayers by making as many reductions as possible. But, right now, what you're going to see tonight is we're going to propose a school budget of $16,962,077, with a request for a town appropriation of $14,745,139. There's an increase of 2.9% over last year's town appropriation. The more important number to me to really highlight is that actually represents a .05 reduction in total growth over the FY25 budget. So, we are in a very interesting position, and I'm not sure I'll ever see a position like this again, beyond my 30th year that I'm already in, where we're in a position where we're level funding or just under-level funding, but at the same time, we're at or above level services. Those two things don't normally coincide at all in municipal budgeting. So, because we've done a lot of rightsizing, and because you're going to see tonight that we're once again proposing over $1 million in reductions, that's how we've been able to make those two numbers happen in a budget, and that normally doesn't happen. So, while the 2.9 is about $40,000 higher than the 2.7 would have been, it's really important to recognize there's $1.2 million in reductions tonight, and that the overall growth is below zero. And I think that has to be understood as clearly as possible as we present this. Spent a lot of time, as a district, establishing updated mission and vision and core values. This was important work for us, not just because our high school is going to be going through accreditation in a couple of years, but because our new strategy for district improvement, which is now in year two, in combination with the budget book, those are the two drivers for our school district. We have our strategy for district improvement, which articulates our hopes and dreams and all of the forward action that we have on behalf of our students. And then, the budget book is the complementary resource that backs up how we do what we do. So, if you really are studying the school district, and you want to understand the impact of your tax dollars and the impact that the school district is having on Rockport and on the next generation of Rockport citizens, it's really important that you understand how those two documents are married. They will both be on the district website, and if you ever want hard copies, just come on in, and Amanda Oger will take care of you at Central Office and give you as many hard copies of anything that you're looking for. But I do think it's important to stop on this tonight and recognize the work that the district leadership has done, and that the faculty has done over the past couple of years to really help us put this together. Major components of the school budget in general, the operating budget and the capital improvement budget. We are extremely thankful to the CI PC, to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, for the support that we get year over year over year outside of the appropriated budget. Super, super important to acknowledge that organization, and that the town does support us, not just by voting yes on our school budget every year, but through the other mechanisms around capital improvement. These are our buildings and our facilities as a town, whether it's your library that you're sitting in tonight, whether it's Town Hall, the police station, the annex, the schools, they're Rockport's buildings. And so, we need to make sure we're continuously taking care of our buildings and grounds across the community, because, as I've said before, I don't see a time in our near future where we're building brand-new buildings. So, we need to continue to take care of the buildings we have. So, I'm, we're thankful for the capital improvement budget in a way that supports our facilities, as well as a lot of the other needs of the school district. Tonight, we're really talking about the operating budget in its totality, but I just wanted to make sure I took a minute to pause on the capital improvement side of things. Very unique partnership between the Town Technology Department that cannot go unrecognized. When I took the position over three years ago, I had never experienced anything like this. I had never seen a partnership between the town side and the school district side. And quite honestly, I was apprehensive, just because you're afraid of the unknown sometimes. And here I am, three years in, recognizing how valuable and important this department and this partnership has been. So, thank you to Monty and the entire technology team. So, on this page, you'll see all of the new and updated supports that the Technology Department has helped us move teaching and learning forward. And then, the right-hand side is the recurring support that just happens every single year coming off the Town Technology Department. So, that marriage between the town and the school district is really important. I do believe it's cost-effective. I do believe it obviously keeps the school budget sort of in check when it comes to 21st century spending, and it allows the town to make good decisions around everything from technology and classrooms and in offices, to safety and security in our library, in our Town Hall, in our schools. So, that marriage between the town side and the school side from a tech standpoint has been extremely important to me for moving the district forward, and I believe from an efficiency standpoint. So, what you're going to see in these next few pages are the first overviews. The backup, the second half of the book, has all the detailed spreadsheets. So, if you happen to be a spreadsheet person, and you really do like to go through the nitty-gritty of the lines, they're all in the second half of the book. But if you happen to be kind of a 10,000-foot-view person, and you just want to see the large columns and the large numbers and the big picture, that's what I'm going to take you through tonight, so you can see the overarching reality of our budget. So, this gives you a quick overview of four years building up to this year of our expenses, and how they've rolled out over time, and what our proposed budget includes. And then, in the second half, you can see the revenue that comes in that allows us to basically meet the needs of that budget, with the town appropriation, with the circuit breaker reimbursement, with our school choice revenues, and with the ability to leverage some grant money and some user fees. So, this gives you a quick overview of how the expenses and the revenue relate and cover. Really important to highlight that this budget, while there is a 1.2 reduction, 1.2 million-dollar reduction, and 13 positions, I believe, that we're going to talk about in a few minutes, that we're still able to move the district forward. This gives us an overview of the programmatic and staffing priorities that are highlighted and supported by this budget. I talked earlier about our new special education hire. We are putting together what is being called the Intensive Learning Program. This will be a specific educational program and learning environment that helps to keep certain students in their hometown school. It's designed to meet their unique needs. These students will benefit from attending school with their local peers in an inclusive setting, and from not being sent out to a collaborative or a private special ed program that might not be able to offer some of the other homegrown inclusionary aspects of public schooling that we can offer. So, really excited about that program developing, and us getting it off the ground this year, and really rolling it out in full in September. So, this budget does support that. This budget also supports the ongoing addition of a much more robust curriculum review and adoption cycle, so that it's important that we have a five-year cycle, so that we're always looking at our major curricular areas, our resources, and our structural materials, so that we're putting the best materials in front of our teachers and students, and we don't fall behind the curve and find ourselves with 10, 12-year-old materials, particularly from an instructional standpoint. So, this budget allows us to have increased that line a little bit, and help Jody Good, you and the Teaching and Learning Department, make sure that we can really work with our content curriculum leaders in having a much more viable and robust review and adoption cycle, so that we're not falling behind in keeping pace. Big, big, big focus on professional development. I wish we could have had the public see what happened yesterday. We called it, oh my God, what we called it, what was the name of it? The Stay Conference. It was kind of a staycation, but instead, it was a stay conference. So, we had our own in-house conference yesterday. It was teachers, leading teachers. Teachers put proposals together around best practices, and everything from instruction to social-emotional learning aspects. Teachers built one-hour, one-hour-and-five-minute sessions. We ran it like a conference, and it was a half-day PD yesterday, where it was teachers leading teachers. And it was really, really powerful to leverage our in-house experience, to see teachers kind of shine and be proud of the work they're doing, and pay it forward, and be able to leverage some capacity of knowledge in the district. So, we're putting a lot of emphasis on professional development that's tied to our strategy for district improvement. So, we have goals that we want to achieve in the district, and we're trying to put our money where our mouth is when it comes to training our professionals. So, the leadership team took the lead, and took some professional development yesterday, and gave some professional development yesterday. So, we're all in this together as lifelong learners. So, really important that we're continuously supporting PD for our staff. Proud of the fact that, over the past couple of years, we've really been able to expand our Computer Science and Engineering Program. We have some work to do to make sure we're getting as many kids in those classes as possible. And then, last year, we added Middle School Computer Science and Engineering Program as well. So, we now will have a 6th to 12th grade continuum for Computer Science and Engineering that's really robust, comes out of a partnership with Project Lead the Way, almost fully grant-funded, heavily grant-funded to support that program. And so, big thank you to everybody who's worked on that, and to our high school staff, who's really put a lot of time and effort after school and in the summer to put in professional development and go out and get trained in this program. And our students are really going to benefit from having some really legit Computer Science and Engineering Programs that will get better every year, the more we get trained up and get quality materials in front of our kids. One of the focuses you've heard the district talk about for a couple of years now is this high focus on multi-tiered system of supports. This is to make sure we have really strong Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 instruction and support for our students, based on the concept of meeting them where they are, so that it's not just teaching to the middle, but we're recognizing that there are students at different levels, at different age levels all the time. And so, some of the things we put in place last year that we're going to continue, because this budget supports it, is we'll continue to keep our elementary instructional coach, who's supporting staff development related to inclusive strategies in the classroom, our acceleration specialists, who are providing students with just-in-time scaffolding and support in a variety of settings, in class and outside of the classroom. We're implementing a data analytics platform that will allow us to take all of our progress monitoring that we have on children, all of our data, and put it in one place, kind of like a data warehouse, and then, it'll be able to give us some data that we can review. Teachers can take a look at it, and they can change their instructional practices or instructional resources based on that data, based on what the child or the group of children needs. And that's a much different learning environment than many of us grew up in. So, we're trying to use data much more wisely. I think school districts could drown in data, there's just so much of it around us all the time. And none of us, who are full-time teachers, honestly have the capacity to become data experts. So, we're hoping that this kind of a program and some kind of leadership around this will help us sort of data mine a little bit, and then, make it easier to hand teachers some results and some information on how to impact their instruction. Also, in the spirit of talking about capital improvement and taking care of the buildings that are owned by the taxpayers in Rockport, we are going to add one more position to our maintenance staff. As our buildings continue to age, we've run into, you know, issues with roof, roof issues, we've had heating issues, things that we need to stay on top of. And I, as much as I preach preventative maintenance, I do feel like we wind up in a reactionary mode more often than not. So, I'm going to try to put a stopgap in by adding another person in that department who can really help us maybe be more preventative and less reactionary when it comes to taking care of those, the facilities. These next two pages will highlight the really deep and impactful reductions that we've had to decide to make in order to remain nimble, to remain respectful of the taxpayers' allocation, and, as you just saw on the last page, believe it or not, to still be able to move the district forward and remain competitive, and to provide our kids with the best college and career readiness possible. Nothing on this list was thought of lightly. Everything is heavily debated. Some of it continues to be discussed, not as options or not options, but just discussed, because we're still processing some of this. So, I'll step us through some of these reductions, so that the public understands the difficult decisions and maybe the why behind most of them. The first three reductions are actually reductions that happen after the town meeting vote. So, when you do zero-based budgeting, instead of just rolling all your numbers forward, if positions have shifted, or there's been attrition over time, you want to recognize that and not then roll those numbers forward. That's kind of disingenuous budgeting, so, which happens a lot in municipal budgeting. So, we're trying to avoid doing that. So, this reduction of the 1.0 Middle School Assistant Principal, the reduction of a 1.0 Middle School Special Ed Teacher, and the reduction of the 1.0 Elementary Paraprofessional were all positions that had been vacated after the town approved the budget, and we didn't fill those positions. So, those were savings that were seen early and often, quite honestly, this year, but we wanted to make sure they were recognized in this budget bill, because they are reductions compared to the budget that was passed on the town meeting floor last year. The biggest personnel reduction that took the most discussion, the most thought, really, was we're in a position to reduce the equivalent of seven full-time teachers. This reduction is necessitated by declining enrollment. We know we have declining enrollment across the Commonwealth, Massachusetts, and all of New England is experiencing substantial declining enrollment, between 25% and 35%. If you, when you get your hands on the copy of the budget book, and I'll show this to the public tonight, we've contracted with Nezdek, the New England School Development Council. That's a third-party organization that we've now used, I think, for the third year in a row, to do our school year enrollment projections, so that it's not just Branco's numbers or someone else's numbers coming at you, but it's a third-party that's done an analysis. They've done analysis of birth rates across the Commonwealth and the declining enrollment across the Commonwealth. And we are on pace with the rest of the Commonwealth. It's just because we're already a small community, population-wise, that it looks, it looks more dire sometimes when you have a small town compared to having a school district with 3,000, 4,000 students. So, because we have declining enrollment, we really recognized we had to be able to address the student-to-teacher ratio. It does have a little bit of an impact on class size and certain grade levels that we can discuss tonight. But overall, what's going to happen is there's going to be a reconfiguration at the middle school, so that there will, instead of 12 teachers, we're down to eight teachers there, and there'll be six, sorry, four teachers rotating in this, through the 6th grade, and there'll be four teachers rotating in a looping model in 7th and 8th grade. A lot of research around looping. We believe that that's a solid concept. The middle school faculty, as I've said in many meetings here already, the middle school faculty spent a lot of time coming together with us as a leadership team to workshop what this will look like. So, I'm really thankful and proud of the RTA for the partnership that we had around some of these difficult decisions this year. And I think we're going to be stronger as a school district, because we're partnering, and because we're working collaboratively on some of these tough decisions. We've also made a decision to reduce six curriculum coordinator positions, which are stipended positions. So, you'll see that here in the middle. That is happening in a way to get a little more, a little more efficient by having one person doing K-5 Math/Science, one person doing K-5 English/Social Studies. There is, there is a recognized loss, because you don't have one person in one subject area, or because you have one person now crossing a 5th or 6th grade grade span. But we also have less adults in every department. So, it doesn't seem as financially viable and effective to have that many people leading less people. And if you look at the total amount of money those stipends saved adds up to $36,000, and we were not comfortable, as a leadership team, proposing to the school committee another reduction of a full person. And so, instead, we have restructured the leadership of curriculum from a teacher's standpoint, and we believe that's a little more responsible than making a 14th cut of a person. We also have a proposed reduction of the equivalent of five FTEs of paraprofessionals. This is being able to be done for multiple reasons. One, because we have new programming coming in the elementary school, and so, we'll have an additional professional overseeing that. And theoretically, we'll have more students covered by one paraprofessional than we currently have being covered by singular paraprofessionals. Secondly, Anne Marie and the Department of Student Services, as I think we've talked about here, has a state audit coming in, or already came in, March, thank you, coming in in March. So, that's a state audit that's going to give Anne Marie and the Special Ed Department a lot of information on our effectiveness and meeting the needs of our struggling learners, and on how we're doing from a budgetary standpoint, and from a deployment of resources and, resources, human and, and materials. So, I'm not sure how that will impact next year, which is why we've been conservative with addressing that in this budget, but we do anticipate reviewing that audit over the summer and early fall, and it could really give us a lot of great information for the FY27 budget bill, to help us address how we're meeting the needs of special ed students and how those expenses are being managed. So, there will be more to come on the special ed front as we move into FY26 next, next school year. And the final reduction is reduction of one full-time administrator. This is being done by eliminating the current position of Elementary Assistant Principal/ Special Ed Facilitator, and by creating a new position that will be one full-time pre-K to 12 special ed facilitator. So, there'll be one person in that role covering pre-K to 12, as opposed to having two in that team chair model, one at each school. Again, we have declining enrollment. We've done a really good study around caseloads in comparative districts, and even districts much larger than us. While we do believe it's a difficult job, and we do understand the job that the people in these roles are doing now is difficult... do understand the job that the people in these roles are doing now is difficult, we also believe that it's important that we continue to look at all departments. And so, we felt we had to look at the administrative team, if we've already looked at paraprofessionals, the RTA and RESA. So, we wanted to make sure that when we were making our cuts, we were sort of looking at the entire breadth and depth of the district when we did that. The second page of reductions is simply, I don't mean simply, it's the, it's the list of non-personnel reductions. So, you'll see decrease in curriculum review and adoption, increase in transportation offsets, increase in the gate fee offsets, increase in athletic user fee offsets. So, we're trying to take some other monies from other offsets as opposed to putting them into the taxpayer appropriated side. We are decreasing some of the maintenance and supply budget from the originally proposed number. So, most of these, as you go, I won't read each one of them, but as you go through each one of them, you're going to see that in almost all cases, the reductions from the proposed number. So, what that means is when we did zero-based budgeting, we identified a number that we believed was the right number, built the budget. Now, we had to close the gap, and as a result, we had to go back, sharpen our pencils up and decide, you know what, we're going to have to find a way to do each one of these things with a little less than we had originally anticipated. And so, that's how we come to that final determination. And the very final, $36,938 to close the final budget gap is, that's the contribution from the reserve. So, right now, we have $2.2 million-ish, right around $2 million. I know, I feel like I've been asked that every year on town meeting floor, so I'll answer it now, and then I'll probably answer it again on town meeting floor. But right now, we're sitting right around $2 million in that reserve. And so, we believe we can, we can manage that, less than $40,000 out of the reserve to close the gap, as opposed to it once again, taking another look at supplies, materials, or human resources. So, that comes together as a total reduction of just over $1.4 million in this budget, and $1.2 million of it is used to close the gap, where the remaining couple hundred thousand dollars was presented as cuts that happened after town meeting. This next page just gives a quick highlight to the community about our student enrollment. So, we have 633 students enrolled currently in Rockport Public Schools, pre-K to 12. That does not include current 22 out-of-district placements. So, in-house, we have 633 students. That is reflective of the declining enrollment. Our projected in-house numbers show that over a five-year period of time, we'll be somewhere between 550 and 570. The Nezdeck projections are a little deeper in the reductions. They have us down around 500. So, we believe it's probably going to fall between that 525 and 550 range. But again, it's dependent on who moves in, it's dependent on school choice, it's dependent on birth rates, there's a lot of variables. So, when you look at projections, even Nezdeck's data will tell you, if you go beyond five years, it's, you're sort of rolling the dice in your projections. But we feel pretty confident about the five-year projections that we have that we're working with. And that's how we're building our budget, that's how we're building our staffing models, and that's how we're building our programming. It's one of my favorite pictures right there. I don't even know who it is, I think it's just great. Is it? So, when we talk about school choice, approximately 25% of the district's total enrollment is made up of school choice. I believe, at my last check, it was 24.6-ish, but it's right around 25%. That's, that percentage is actually held for many, many years in the district. What changes when you talk about how much money the district gets or doesn't get from school choice is because it's less children. So, when the state experiences declining enrollment, that's not just unique to Rockport residents, that's across the board. So, it doesn't matter where the children are coming from, all of those communities are having declining enrollment. So, collectively, we still have 25% of our students coming in for school choice, which says a lot about the strength of our district. But at the same time, we take in less dollars, times 5,000 per student, because of the fact that the entire Commonwealth is experiencing a little bit of declining enrollment across the board. So, these are our projections of school choice in and school choice out over the past 10 years or so. And what I will show you on the second page here is how this breaks down. So, you can see at the elementary school, how many students per grade come in on choice, how many go out. At the middle level, how many come in, how many go out. And at the high school level, how many come in and how many come out. And then we've broken it down, so you can see school choice receiving by town, because I know some people are always interested where kids are coming from, and then some people are always interested in where kids are going to. And if you total up that number of out to other schools, there's about 68 students here, and there's 44 students who are sending. So, that's about, about 112 students who are making, families who are making decisions to either homeschool, go to our public technical high school, go to private schools, or school choice out. So, if you put that in perspective, we've got over 600 students in, we've got 112 whose families are making different choices. But you can see over here that the greater majority of them are private school, Essex Tech, which by the way, is our public school option, and homeschool, which is also by law, our public school option. Just a quick breakdown of the characteristics. This is right from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, these are our enrollment updates, and our student characteristics, and our selected populations. So, that some people always want to know what the breakdown of our student population looks like. So, if that's data that's interesting to you, that is here in the budget book on page 16. Hold on, I went too fast. There it is. One of the things we talk about a lot when we build the strategy for district improvement and the budget every year, is what our future consideration should be. So, we want to make sure we're thinking ahead, so we're not just reacting at the end of every school year. So, we continue to talk about having a consistent and systemic curriculum review and adoption cycle, and how important that is. We continue to talk about keeping Rockport on the map, so to speak, the importance of having academic programming that continues to competitively prepare our graduates for college and career, that we're taking care of the academic, social, and emotional needs of all of our students that support their specific needs. And one of the beautiful things of a small school district is we are much more easily able to identify what those needs are, particularly in the areas of social, emotional needs. And we're also much more nimble, and it's easier to pivot for the need of a child by name than it is in a much larger district. So, when you talk about what the value-added of a homegrown school district and a smaller school district is, there are a lot of intangibles, and there are a lot of immeasurables. But if it's your child, I don't think they're intangible, and I don't think they're measurable. And just before we move on to some of the deeper parts of the budget, it's just important, again, talk about the community partnerships that we have. We have so many established philanthropic organizations in this community that support Rockport Public Schools. And then on top of that, there's just ad nauseam, there are businesses and townsfolk who are willing to step in and give their time, their energy, their expertise, and their dollars to the, to the students and to the faculty and staff. So, again, on behalf of the district and the school committee, I thank the community for the support of public education and for our school district. As you move ahead, some of the overarching breakdowns here, this breaks down the salary and wages part of the book. So, again, if you want to go deeply into the budget book, you can do that with the line items, but this will give you the overview, so you can see what the proposed breakdown is in salary and wages. The majority of these changes are all based on negotiated contractual salary adjustments. This breaks down our, the overview of our line item expenses, and then you can go into each one of these in depth in the second half of the book and take a look at that. But you'll see overall where the expenses are. You can see where some of the decreases come in, particularly in areas like special education. And then you can see where, you'll see a decrease coming, well, transportation's flat this year. The interesting thing about transportation is right now, we're looking at special ed transportation uniquely, and we're looking at our public transportation needs. But our special ed transportation, we're working with our collaborative to create a regional transportation program. I believe that's going to come to fruition for September. So, it'll be interesting to see that partnership happen. So, there's about 10 or 12 school districts that are part of our North Shore Consortium, who've come together. And instead of each one of us partnering with separate transportation companies, which becomes less cost-effective, we're going to put one RFP out to bid, and we're going to try to hire one transportation company, who's going to cover six, seven, eight, 10, 12, however many districts finally sign on board. But we are one of the early adopters with this. And so, instead of Rockport putting a student on a van, or a transportation to come down to a specialized school, and another town sending a kid from another school that's on the way from Rockport, we'll be able to share those expenses and leverage that a little bit. There's a lot of moving parts behind this right now, but I'm comfortable talking about it publicly, because I was at a meeting recently with the collaborative board, and I do believe it looks like it's going to get off the ground, and we're really aiming for September at this point. When we talk about revenues from grants, there are two different ways we're getting these. Most, most of these federal grants are sort of locked in. We know what we're going to get. They do tend to get adjusted a little bit here and there over time. But you can see that the four years of how we have, how we have reserved, received federal grants, and how those offsets have been used to help us manage the budget over time. And then we have worked really hard, as a small leadership team, to do our best to go out and leverage as many competitive grants as possible. So, this is a list of just over $75,000 in competitive grants that we were able to get for this school year, and we're hoping to get between $75,000 and $100,000 again. Again, it's not necessarily predictable. Lot, a lot of time and effort goes into that. Members of the leadership team, Principals Waterman and Rose, and Directors Goodu and Lester, really do a lot of the heavy lifting behind all of the grant allocation and chasing. And then June really sits in the room, making sure all the money happens, making sure we're bringing the money in, spending it appropriately, and then that we have a check and balance to make sure that we've expended it correctly and are qualified to get them again. So, you'll see a couple highlights here, that we had an accelerating literacy learning through high-quality instructions grant that came in last year through '23, that we're still really happy to have leveraged, and that helped us get the implementation of our new reading program with some professional development and literacy resources, Project Lead the Way funding from the grants. We had a vacation acceleration grant that came in from this past summer, correct? So, we had some summer programming for some of our students. And then a creative projects for schools grant, which will support the creation of a performing arts workshop at RMHS for students to access tools, materials, and creatively to design successful for prop building sets, theater programs. And they'll be learning to use tools and work with different sensory materials. There is also a visual and hearing impairment component to this project, so that we can meet the needs of visually impaired or hearing impaired students as well, through some of this hands-on learning opportunities. So, thank you to the, to the leadership team members who have really helped get as many dollars as we can through this variety of grant funding. Preschool tuition, we don't have an anticipated number yet. That will become clearer once we have our enrollment taken care of. But you can see over time what, where that's come in. You can see where our revenues from athletics has come in, and that does get committed to the budget over time. And then the variety of other offsets and revenues that we have coming in, special ed circuit breaker, the school choice, the choice direct build backs, transportation user fees. And I can't remember when we get our Medicaid number, I feel like it's always late.
We get it from the, from the town accountant.
Thank you. Okay. So, when that comes in, we'll update that box as well.
Yes. And it would be at the end of the year.
And then this will be the final summary page that I show. So, this is the final summary page that just sort of breaks down everything that we've talked about, that shows the summary, the gross budget, the .05% decrease, and how the offsets are being spent in combination with the town contribution. And then for anybody who is really detail-oriented, you'll, I'll, I'll show you what you'll see when you get into the budget book as early as tomorrow. You'll see all the line item breakdowns that are the backup to all of the overviews that I just went through tonight. And then at the end of the backups, you'll be able to access Nezdeck's enrollment projection, and that will give you all the data that you'll need to understand. Our numbers that we present in the book in combination with the enrollment projections, there's historical projections compared to the state and all of New England, there are birth rate projections compared to the state and all of New England. And we use this in combination with our in-house numbers. So, that is, that is the budget book overview. At this point in time, Madam Chair, I think we could probably go to public comment first on the budget itself. And then after public comments, let the school committee have their questions and comments.
Sounds good. Okay, we're opening up the room to public comment. Please come to the table in the front and use your handy dandy.
So, you're going to press the button, the green light will come on, you'll lean in sort of like I am, name, address, and whatever you'd like to say.
My name is Kathleen O'Neill. I live at 3A Smith Street Court. I'm the grandparent of two little boys, one who's in pre-K and one in first grade. First, I want to start by thanking you for the comprehensive work and presentation, which was very helpful. And I also want to thank the two teachers who represented the teachers' union, because that was how I became alerted and concerned when I saw on the front page of the Gloucester Daily Times, the significant impact yet again that the school was facing with the reduction in funding. And that leads me to asking how, so as a, you know, member of the general public, and I certainly try to learn whatever I can about the school curriculum and plans, how is the general public, or parents in particular, or in my case, grandparents, made aware all along the way, or can they be made all along the way? I spoke with somebody earlier who said that there's an email blast or something that I could probably get connected to. But I guess I was surprised, as someone that tends to follow the news, the KPN news, in as many avenues as possible, to learn last year at a public forum, when somebody from the select committee was speaking, and I said, "Oh, a million dollars?" I felt like that was a secret, and it maybe it wasn't intended to be. But I was surprised, but that got me concerned early to see that that was a significant, and I realize this is a significant enrollment issue. I mean, that, so it made sense that there would be a significant impact. But then to learn this year, you know, on Monday, really surprised me, and it made me think, how can I become more aware, but how can the general community, and especially the parents, be more aware all along the way, so that it's not like, you know, pretty much after the fact, and I appreciate, again, the work that went into it. But anyway, so that was, those are my comments.
So, just, if you don't mind, just so the public knows, normally in the public comment, we're, we're going to listen tonight.
Yeah.
And the forum isn't normally for response. But with your permission, this is an easy one that I think needs, needs to at least be made clear that, couple, couple quick, quick comments about it. Number one is, we've done, this is our fifth, our fifth public budget session.
Okay.
And so, that starts really around end of November, first of December. And then we roll out, this budget book wasn't just built in a week, it's been built in months and months. And, you know, multiple meetings here with slides and public information, and then that gets put on the website. So, the build part of it, all of this information of what's being built, what's being added, what's being cut, has been done in four or five-
Like at the school committee?
Public meetings at the school committee, yes.
Okay, all right, which is good to know.
Secondly, there's a communications and advocacy subcommittee that's come together this year, and we're about to publish a hard copy school district newsletter called In the Loop. It's going to get mailed into every household and every business in Rockport. So that if you're not a digital person, and you're not accessing our website, and you're not getting principal newsletters, because you're not a parent or a guardian, this is going to go out to every taxpayer, every homeowner. And we're going to hit them, hit you three times a year. This year, it's only twice. And you're going to see articles around the budget, you're going to see articles around the value-added for a school district, you're going to see articles about the great work our staff and our students are doing. So, it's our way of getting our message out to the community in a way that I think we haven't been able to. There's a lot of people out there that aren't going to access it on the website, aren't going to get the digital newsletters, because they're not sort of in the learning community anymore, but they're part of the greater community. So, we, we do recognize that, and that's going to be an important piece of our work.
I, I did read that that was coming, and I was impressed in looking forward to that. And I also appreciate the reminder that you have monthly meetings. I came early in the fall and was impressed with this group and the students that spoke. And, and I think I just kind of said, "Oh, all right, they're doing a great, they're doing a great job", which you are. But I was surprised, you know, to read that article on Monday. So, thank you, all of you.
Oh, and one other thing too, is if you go on the town website, that's where all of the committee meetings are listed. So, there's a schedule, you click around, I can't tell you exactly where to go. So, you can see also our, you can- So you can see also our, you can see the agenda of any committee that's meeting that week. And you can see our agenda, and you can say, "Oh, I'm not really interested in that." Or you'd say, "Oh, budget, I want to go," or some people don't want to go during budget, you know. But, and-
That got my attention.
Yeah, so that's a good way, as a, as a community member also, it is hard to keep up with everything, so.
All right, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say one more thing. And finally, we are being taped right now. We're, I believe we're live, but we're all just being taped. So you can watch all of the school committee meetings on 1623 Studios. They have a YouTube channel and maybe a Facebook page, but you can definitely access them on their YouTube channel. So 1623 Studios is recording all the meetings, and you can watch them there if you can't come in person.
That's another good thing, yeah.
So again, we're not going to respond to every public comment, but I feel like this was an important one just to talk about transparency and communication, so I appreciate it.
So I drafted a little something to say. All right. So I'm here tonight as principal of the Rockport Middle High School, but also, more importantly, as a taxpayer and a parent of two children in the district. I felt inclined to speak for a few minutes tonight as part of public comment because amidst the talk of budget cuts, once again, I understand the uncertainty the public may feel. As a parent, I understand the public perception of angst and uncertainty. However, as a principal, I feel compelled to share my renewed hope, excitement, and vision for the district, not despite the changes, but in light of them. The forward-thinking visionary leadership of so many people in this district gives me great confidence that our schools will continue to thrive and provide for years to come. The past few months have been humbling, sad at many times, for the personal loss of fantastic people and educators who I have come to love, admire, and respect, but more prominently it has felt oddly inspiring. And that's what I'm here to share with you tonight. Inspiring because in the midst of a time of conflict between union members, administrators, and school boards across the country, I feel like we are so blessed and fortunate to have an extremely extraordinary group of people who have professionally, collegially, and respectfully come together to make decisions in the best interest of our kids and our future. And that is so rare, and I feel like that needs to be highlighted. The state of our budget and the need to right-size the district has been an uncomfortable conversation for a while now. Uncomfortable mostly because we are all so personally invested in being here. Despite the personal sadness of loss, we all know that the changes have been a long time coming, and they are the only way we will continue to thrive as an independent school district, which is what we all strive to become for many, many years to come. We have a lot of work to do, but I couldn't be prouder of the staff I lead and the dedication, commitment, and enthusiasm they have for making Rockport the best place possible for our kids. And kids is at the center of every conversation we've had over the past few months. Our goal continues to be to make the district one people are proud to be a part of because of its quality teachers, programming, and experiences. Rockport is not your average community. It's so much more than that for so many reasons, and I look forward to leading this tough work with the people behind me tonight, many of them, and beside me for so many reasons. We know that it's going to be a tough road ahead, but we are up for the challenge. The collaborative work of the support staff, the teachers, the administrators, and upper level district and town officials has been powerful in assuring we not only support our teachers, but also continue to offer competitive programming, in many cases adding to existing programs and building capacity amongst our staff. I want to sincerely thank the RTA, ARESA, the district leadership team, Superintendent Branco, the school committee, Mitch, the selectmen, the finance committee, and the families who have put our trust in us. During a time when teacher retention is at an all-time low across the nation, the fact that we have people who genuinely want to be here and care about this district so much says so much about who we are and what we believe in. To the community, I wanted to just take the moment to say that you are in good hands. Every conversation that we've had, everything that we do is really for the kids, and we will continue to focus on that. And that will be the fuel that ignites all of us to work harder, be better, and unite around this common purpose. Thank you.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for being forthright about the school reserve. That was a hard figure to get last year. I go on like a broken record from one year to another, talking about the special ed expenses. I believe last year it was 35% of your total budget. I'm unable to see at that distance, so I don't know what this year. That's chiefly the subject of the questions that I got to you through a letter to the Board of Selectmen today. There would be one other question about the sped expenses, and that is how much, and it wouldn't be in Article 5, how much you're going to ask for the sped reserve. You usually ask for money to go into that as well, and that should be added to the total cost, your calculations of the sped expenses. And about the sped expenses generally, they're certainly not the fault of the sped kids, nor of their parents, nor of the school committee, nor of the superintendent. The expenses are entirely the fault of the state, the great and general court, which is what the legislature calls itself, which orders the cities and towns to produce the programs but does not produce the money to pay for them. It is an unfunded mandate. It is wrong with a capital W. The state can raise the money, if it wishes to do so, through taxation. The cities and towns are constrained by Proposition 2 1/2, which I'll venture to say most of us regard as a blessing. Many of us would not go on living here without those restraints in place. So I believe that you, the school committee, owe us, the voters, the taxpayers, a resolution for the town meeting, I've said this numerous times before, calling on the state to undertake to pay all of the sped expenses. You get some dribs and drabs back, the circuit breaker funds, they don't necessarily even pay for what they have said they would pay. And going back to, is it four or five years ago now when Rob Lebo was superintendent, he was delighted and, one might say boasting, that the state was going to undertake to pay the transportation for the sped expenses. 25% one year, 50, 75, 100, none of that came to pass. And we're still stuck paying the expenses. It isn't that people shouldn't be paying the expenses, although opinions vary as to how valuable the programs are and whether or not they might be wasteful. But it's a commitment, a social commitment, but the state needs to be responsible. And I call on you to offer us, the town meeting, a resolution. You say that you regularly are in contact, and I believe you, and I give you credit for your efforts, but it's the town meeting that speaks for the town as a whole. And if such a resolution would count greatly more than anything you, the school committee, might do with state officials. That's not to belittle your efforts, that's just a political fact. One other thing, I see, as far as I could see, that you propose to add to the costs for the trips and the sports. Is that correct?
I think we were increasing, we're not increasing, necessarily increasing the fees, but what we can absorb from the fees that we collect towards the expenses that we have. That's what was increased.
I see. I feel strongly that it's wrong to be charging fees for any of those things. You will certainly say, putting words in your mouth, and forgive me, that the sports and the trips are an integral and an important part of your programs. They're not frills, and it's supposed to be a public education, and public education is supposed to be free. So however you come up with the money, I think it's wrong that the parents or the kids should have to pay for those programs. And when I went on about this before, I was assured that no one was turned away. And certainly that's good and good to hear, but that isn't really an adequate answer. It still leaves the question of somebody having to go, whether it would be the parent or the child, and asked to be let off paying. And that's degrading. No one should have to do that. And somehow or other, I think you need to come up with the money to fund all of those things out of your budget, whether you take it out of the reserve or go begging to the Rockport Education Foundation, although in terms of a budget, that's no solution. You could come up with the money. I guess that's all. Thank you.
So if there's no one else in the room, I do have one more that came in. So Joanne Hildreth, co-president of the RTA, was going to speak tonight, but I think left school sick because we definitely didn't want her around kids and teachers, and we definitely didn't want her here tonight. So we do, we do wish her well, but she emailed this in to me tonight and asked if I would read it on her behalf since she couldn't be here. "I spoke at the last meeting with Stacy Twombly on the behalf of the union. This time I would like to speak for myself and specifically about the middle and high schools. School is where both children and adults make some of their most meaningful connections. For youth, these connections spark curiosity and confidence. For the adults and all of us, they reignite purpose and passion. We learn in connection, we grow in connection, we thrive in connection. This is not just our job, this is our privilege." That's a quote from Jane Feinberg from The Power of Place Learning Communities. "During the last meeting, you heard some of our concerns, one of which is that some of us are overwhelmed by changes to our teaching assignments. This is true, but some of us are also excited to try something new. Given the closeness of our teaching community, we have been helping and supporting each other through this change, which is only bringing us closer together. Our principal, Amy Rose, has been thoughtful about any changes and has done her best to match teacher and student needs. This intentional decision-making should have an overall positive impact on both groups. She is also supportive by way of time and opportunities for collaboration. We are thankful for her support. Without it, the transition could have been isolating and difficult for many involved. One of Rockport's strengths is that we are a small system and that relationships matter. As you can see, I believe that this is true for both faculty and students. When faculty feel supported and connected, we are more capable of transferring similar supports and connections to our students." So we hope Joanne feels better soon. And if that's everybody, we can move on to school committee comments and questions.
Any other public comments so we can move on to school committee comments and questions? I have one question that, just want to start off with the procedural thing because I think it is interesting to me, and it may be mundane to everybody else, but we now have a middle, good night. We now have a middle high school, yet we're seeing the budget being broken by middle in one budget and high school in another. And if you could just sort of explain that, and if that's going to change and morph over the years, or if it's still going to be kind of split?
My short version is the state requires it, but I'll let June give a little better answer than that.
Correct. On my reporting, I must break down by the 6 to 8 and the 9 to 12. And that's not just for regular ed, but student service, special ed services as well. So it's still required, and so it's best if we budget that way and manage it and code everything appropriately to match the state's requirements.
So for example, that's why you'll see like .5 next to a principal or .5 next to a principal, particularly in salary lines, because we know that that's one person splitting those two both levels.
Anybody else want to pop in there right now? Questions? Yeah.
I have a comment and then a question or two. My comment is, over the last couple of months, as you mentioned, we've been here talking about the budget, kind of in bits and pieces and parts of it as we go on. And it's really nice to see it all kind of come together tonight in one spot. What really stood out to me is on page 10 and 11, when we talk about the, this program and staffing priorities, and then the strategies to close the gap. Those two pages together, along with the SDI and the strategic objectives, to me, putting those documents together, side by side, you can really see how, as you also mentioned, that, I think we are above our services while maintaining the budget. So it's just, to me, it's really, really nice to see those pages together, working with the district improvement plan. I guess just a simple question is on, on page nine, where you have the, the circuit breaker amount, does that include the transportation reimbursement in that, in that item?
It can. It depends. What happens, it's a very complex calculation, and it's based on, Emery, if you can correct me if I'm wrong on things. It has to be a certain amount above four times foundation budget of what the state decides you should spend per child. It's above that. If tuition does not reach that threshold, you now add all the other additional services, including transportation, and now you, that bumps it up over, then you're receiving the 75% reimbursement on that number above the foundation number that they've set. It also, if you have a child that has a very intense program where the tuition is already well above foundation and there's transportation, then you're getting 75% of the full amount of that transportation piece. It depends really on the whole financial package for that, each individual child, of whether you are getting the full 75% of the transportation or not, and also whether the state can afford to fund that.
So the, the number of 676, that's kind of the, based on historical best guess, and it could go up or down?
Oh, yes. It can fluctuate all the time. What happens is it's based, the state pays in arrears. So this number is based on what we project, based on the children that are here this year, and what the calculation will be that is done in the spring. And then they will then calculate what they can afford of that, and hopefully it is 75%. That is their goal at all times. And that they will then pay that out next year. So that's why the number is down. If you have a couple of children that have very intensive programs, age out, move, so come back in-house, which is truly the goal-
Right.
-then it's less expensive, or they're no longer here, you're not going to receive those funds.
Right.
Is that why the number looks different, lower?
Yes.
Or why because we have less?
Yes. Without going into detail about, because we have such a small population without discussing individual children, but yes, it's a combination of both of those things that I just discussed. Thank you.
And one other question. If you could just comment briefly about the, the reduction of the para-professionals and the teachers, and sort of how that, you know, my understanding is licensed, you know, we talked about this at our, I think it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that, we talked about the licensing of those teachers and the tenure. So I think it's important just to maybe reiterate.
Yep. So I think a couple of things to talk about there. There's a difference between which human beings are being impacted by reduction in force and which positions are being impacted. And in this room, we feel both. We really feel the people, but from a budgetary standpoint, you talk about the positions. And so what that means is, without going into too much HR detail publicly, we have contractual bumping rights, we have seniority, we have licensure, and we have professional teacher status, and then we have what the state calls highly qualified. We have this mix of categories for our professionals that require us, when you have a reduction in force, to reduce people in a certain order based on all of those categories. So while it might feel, once, once it's public and people start to identify which human beings are being impacted, it might feel like a certain level of the school district is getting hit harder than another. But the reality is, the actual FTE reductions coming from a diff, could be coming from a different level of the, of the school district based on the seniority. So if, to put that with real numbers, and to not discuss the HR component, but to use real numbers around that, what that means right now is that there's actually- real numbers around that, what that means right now is that there's actually a 5.8 FTE reduction in positions at the middle school, six, seven, and eight, in core content, and at the high school, it's only a .8 reduction. But it's, there's a potential that the human beings aren't all coming from that 5.8. Does that make sense? Yeah. Para-professionals, similarly, it's mostly seniority, it's all seniority, and, you know, so it's seniority, it's need-based in a unique way, and it's programmatically based in a unique way.
Kathy? I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this process. It is enormously complex, in a very small system, to do the work that you have done and that the administrative staff has done. It's very, very hard to do this work, and when I think about what is at the heart of it, it's what is best for students, and it has required people to work together like never before, and to be very, very innovative in order to continue to focus on the improvements that we want to see in curriculum, and instruction, and achievement, and growth. And so when I see, for instance, an effort to create a position that would allow some children to return to their home school, that's really innovative. When I see school superintendents working together to try to create a consortium to reduce the cost of special education, that's exactly what you have to do. And so to see that work happening with this level of transparency, I think, is very important. And I would echo our thanks to both of the associations that we've negotiated with over the past two years. Those were hard negotiations, and we appreciated the work that went into that. We wouldn't be here today without those successful negotiations, and so I just think it's important to pause, because so much work goes into this document, and it's so well-done. So I think all of us really appreciate the expertise and the attention to students, and it's remarkable to see a budget proposal that's essentially flat. And I would also say, I suspect everybody in the room understands how focused the school committee is on the reserve, on how long that will stretch, on our fiscal health going forward. It's very important that we do this work together, and so we appreciate the partnerships that we have built. So that's my two cents. Thank you for listening.
I have, I have just a, I don't understand what this is on page 31, this comment in the very corner. I don't know what that refers to, and I feel like I need to understand everything. I can't tie it back to anything. It's not making sense. It's FY, this is O and M.
Thank you. The historical one, FY 24, 43.2K. Is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah, FY 24, 59, or the one above it. I don't know where, because if you go back to FY 24, it's 15. I just don't know what that signed back to. That footnote, I don't know what the footnote is.
June, are you seeing the same one?
Page 31, and it's the... I'm gonna, it's, it could, I'm sorry, I have it magnified so big I can't see the whole thing. Maintenance and Supplies, like 4220. There's the last column on the right. I don't know what that's, I don't understand that. The FY 24, 31.7K. I don't know what that's referring to.
Under comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's just a notation to educate, for example, why don't we do custodial supply line? It's actually what was spent in fiscal '24. We spent $43.2,000 in custodial supplies in fiscal '24, because that's the last year we have information on, because we're in '25. And that justifies why we increased the budget from $38,000 for this year, $38,500, to $45,000. If we level funded, it's not honest, it's not going to happen. And so that's more of an education piece for you to know why we did the move that we did.
And that's a good example of the zero-based budget concept, right? In some municipal budgeting, you just roll that number forward, and then you suddenly have these deficits, or you're trying to play catch-up in certain line items in real time during that fiscal year. So these are adjustments to show you, hey, we had budgeted $38.5, we actually spent more than that, so it would be irresponsible for us to just under-budget again. We had to take the money from somewhere else, obviously, but we had to allocate appropriately.
Okay, so, and this is the budget spreadsheet as opposed to the actual? So this number is referring back to the actual fiscal?
Correct.
That's why it's not matching up?
Yes. So for example, $35,000 was budgeted in fiscal '24, yet we needed $43.2. There was huge increases in the costs of supplies, and therefore, we had hoped at $38.5 this year, and the reality is, we're, $45 is much more realistic, and you don't want to be caught with, you know, $20,000, $30,000 deficit in just one line item. So we're trying to be as open as possible on that.
Okay, great. What does the state give Rockport for their school? What is, was it that chapter 70? What does, what does the state allocate Rockport Public Schools? What do they pay?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
$1 million, $7 million? No.
I don't want to guess publicly on that, it would be, but I can get that for you.
But the state does give us money for general education?
Yes, they give it to the town.
They give it to the town.
The town receives it, and it's part of their, it obviously is not the full amount that we're asking the town, not even a fraction of it. And it's a very, very complex formula.
We can just get, we'll get the number.
And we'll get the number for you. But, yes.
I did see a line in the book somewhere that's about 10%, roughly?
Roughly?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
My thoughts are, thank you. It's all about the right people at the right time, right? We have a team here who, when the budget is contracting, the innovation is expanding. Instead of whimpering, you're coming out fighting and with great new ideas, ways to save money, ways to service children, ways to expand programming, to make it more relevant for our students as they go out into the real world. This has not been easy the past few years, but it has been amazing. And I just want to thank everybody, from the students, to the staff, to the leadership, to the school committee. Dr. Branko, thank you. It's my personal thank you. Okay, yes. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year '26 Rockport Public Schools budget as presented this evening?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then so be it. We have a budget, people. So where will this be?
So I'll do two reminders. One, I'll do a reminder on the timeline, right? So now, between February 6th and April 5th, we'll be doing basically what we're calling our Budget Roadshow, right? We'll try to get the budget out there in a lot of forms. It will be on the website, prominently displayed in the news section, and most likely on the finance page. That could be as early as tomorrow. And then we need to give the office a couple days to make a lot of 50-page hard copies. So there'll be bound hard copies sent to Town Hall for FinCom, Board of Selectmen, employees at Town Hall, and the general public. Then there'll be copies at the town library as well. And if anybody wants to just come to Central Office and pick them up, we'll make sure we have some stapled copies there as well. So if you're a hard copy person still, and you can get down to Central Office in the elementary school on the side, come on down, say hi to us, and pick the budget up. I believe we're trying to work with, I think the town administrator is trying to put together the next board meeting, so I know that that's going to be tentatively scheduled sometime in the next week, week and a half, so there'll be some kind of public hearing that the chair, myself, and June will attend. And then we'll be at Town Meeting on the 5th of April. So that's sort of our timeline, and we will, behind the scenes, now begin to refine the actual work, now that we have a budget approved at this level, we'll start to really figure out what that looks like operationally. So again, thank you for supporting it, thank you for your feedback on all of this. It's much appreciated, and budget season seems to start earlier every single year. I feel like if I stay another 10 years in education, I'll be starting to build the budget on July 1st. It's a fascinating experience, quite honestly. So thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see at this time any new business on the agenda.
Nothing.
I don't see any finance on the agenda.
We just covered it.
I think we did. Yeah. Is there any school committee discussion, any new things? There we go.
I just wanted to make a couple comments. One, I just want to recognize, we had a student athlete who reached the 1,000-point club. I think that's important to point out, and congratulations to Josiah Whitley on that one. That takes a lot, that takes a lot of time, commitment, effort, dedication, so kudos to Josiah. And also, right after the last meeting, we talked about Mean Girls, the musical for the middle school, so I got a chance to go out and see that show, and I thought, I was very impressed at the ability at that age level to really encompass those characters. So it was really cool.
Well said.
There is no need for executive session this evening, so at this time, we'll adjourn. Okay? Oh, thank you. I'll never get used to this. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.